I vote with you just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody. Did I send that out to people? Rushed to me, emailed everybody. Did I get it right? Yeah, thanks everybody for being here. First item on the agenda is going to be the acceptance of the agenda. I don't have any changes. I think Ed at this point is too late to add that resolution we've been advertising. So we'll just have to do it next meeting. Turns out Marbleton is passing their fifth penny resolution, but we only got a copy of it. An hour ago.
And you just, Manny, they passed theirs, but they didn't have a written document yet.
Right.
So.
What did they pass?
Hey, I think, I believe that they passed the go ahead and move forward on it, but they haven't passed the resolution. So we will have that on for the next agenda. We thought it was going to be on this one, but whoa, it is not. So if I can have a motion to accept the agenda as published.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second that.
Move by Councilman Swapper, second by Councilman Loftus to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda are the minutes from our September 22 meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of the September 22nd, 2025 regular town council meeting.
I'll second.
Move by Councilwoman Boyce, second by Councilwoman Seva. I keep on wondering how you're Councilman Scott, which is wrong. To approve the minutes of September 22nd, 2025 regular town council meeting and discussion. Hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed and assumptions.
Fun here.
Forward zero, four, four, zero, one, please. Next item, the minutes from the October 3rd, 2025 special town council meeting, that very long meeting that we had.
I move that we approve the minutes of the October 3rd, 2025 special town council meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, move by Councilwoman Boyce, second by Councilman Swapper to approve the minutes of October 3rd, 2025 special town council meeting. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed and assumptions.
Aye.
So that's four, zero, one. Yeah. All right. Next item on the agenda are citizen concerns. Darker in here than Justin. You know, somebody already made this comment.
This is darker.
He's gloomy outside.
It might be just slowly tipping off, man.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Want to get up there, just get them all, just do all along.
Did you hit all the light switches? Maybe it only turns off.
Well, we can count at least last week.
There we go.
Should I push harder?
They're still like.
Yeah.
I was trying to go slightly, eh, probably those light switches over there. All right, I think he has no citizen concerns, right? Any citizen concerns? Okay. None. Any council concerns? All right. Item B is going to be our consent agenda. This is pretty straightforward. Temporary use for the Mountain Inn Museum, Frosty 5K, the fire prevention open house, which is in arrears. The snow burn removal contract award, the 2025-26 generator maintenance contract award, and the brine enhancement procurement. Any questions? Anybody want to take anything off? Yeah, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilman Loftus, second by Councilman Swapper to approve the consent agenda as it was published. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. That motion also carries five, zero. Next item is our public hearing. By the swingers Green Fourth filing subdivision application. I feel like swingers is the wrong name for it. I'm sorry.
It's like plural, plural. It's a really.
Oh, that's not a misprint. That's actually.
No, that's actually.
The original subdivision is swingers Greens.
Okay. Yeah.
Right? Okay. All right. So, all right. So I'm announcing the public hearing. Hey, go for it. To approve organized subdivision for swingers Greens fourth filing include vacation of lot one and the vacation of lot two, and the creation of lot 15 and lot 16. And current chairman Wells of Planning and Zoning happens to be the surveyor of this project, so.
Mr. Mayor and council members, this is a subdivision, scope of subdivision is a, what I would consider a minor subdivision. We're a lot re-aligning, where we're just changing, we're not creating new lots, we're just realigning how they are facilitated in the town of Pinedale. I think it is important to note, as I start the staff report, that this did go to planning and zoning. And that at planning and zoning, Mr. Wells, because he is the agent for the applicant, did not partake in any of the discussions or voting. So that meeting was held by our vice chair, who was Tessa Manning. At that meeting, the planning and zoning commission failed to make a recommendation. The motion they made to deny it failed to two, and I'll get into some of those reasons here in a second. But I did try to explain it while on staff report. If you've had a chance to read it and see the letter signed by Tessa Manning as the vice chair for that meeting. Generally speaking, this subdivision has caused a fair bit of confusion because the way it was, there's no record of the annexation County Clerk's Office. And when you go and dig through the minutes, it didn't come up just from Mr. Wells and the current owner of the property. But Mike Jackson from Rio Verde has contacted me as the county head, the county road application in area where they're trying to figure out who owns this portion of Par Avenue. Is that the town or is that the county or is it local? And looking back to the minutes, it was annexed as ordinance number 211, Town of Pinedale, June 6, 1988. Is when that ordinance began. It was finalized in August of that year. This was par, the minutes that we found are quite interesting minutes. If you're ever looking for a good read, go from June through August of 1988. There was a mayoral election and council members had changed over. First line of business included some staff removal at the Town of Pinedale as well as some annexation. So some good minutes, but within those minutes, the, this portion was annexed and the town council at the time specifically indicated that there'd be no improvements required for the annexation to town standards. These two lots came into the, the Town of Pinedale, and in the ordinance, it specifically spells out that no improvements will land on the Town of Pinedale, no costs associated with the developments, but no development of roads or water sewer structure was required of a developer at the town of annexation. So we are dealing with a odd, and then it clear, there was no plat ever recorded, no plat ever made of the subdivision. So it's kind of this remnant county parcel. The two lots that were annexed are part of a county subdivision that was completed swingers Greens. It's just lots one and two. So they are still subject to the original covenants of that subdivision, which does have some requirements. One of those requirements being that they can't be further subdivided into smaller parcels. It's kind of not our role as the town to review the covenants and enforce covenants. However, they're not really subdividing into small parcels. Two lots for two lots, same amount of ground. They're not taking two lots and turning it into a town. So I don't see any reason for the town to poke our nose into those private covenants for any reason. That's between those, the covenants are, is the agreement just between landlords of those original subdivisions. What Mr. Harper would like to do as the applicant and his agent here is to represent, I'm going to throw the map up here just in one second to get scroll. I just got to figure out how to share. Just give me a second. Brain is not. All right, I kind of.
Just play people online and see what we're talking about as well.
Yep. So if you can see my screen, or my map, it's kind of going to be jumpy up there, but this lot line here is the current separation of lot two on the western portion and lot one, swinger green, is this triangle located here. This is the original subdivision. What the subdivider would like to do is to change to the fold lines. One of the confusing aspects that kind of has come up is where is legal access? Because from town code standpoint in the development, a street or every parcel in the Town of Pinedale has to be budded by a publicly maintained street. The original roads of Par Avenue and Birdie Lane were dedicated easements or dedicated roads just to the public. No ownership to any government agency or maintenance responsibilities. However, at the annexation, the annexation brought in half of Par Avenue and half of Birdie Lane, but no cost to the Town of Pinedale. Currently, we don't maintain. Those are current dirt roads. We don't maintain half the road. We don't plow half the road. There is some discussion that's kind of taking place of maybe, I guess, we should. We should have conversation on that with council. But from the town's perspective, the road that we maintain that is paved and maintained and built to town standards is Country Club Lane. So during the subdivision, the town staff felt that the, to bring this in further, I guess, compliance with the town code, that we would need a legal access across lot 15 that had budded up to lot six, or that served lot 16. They got them over to Country Club Lane so that we could give this a Country Club Lane address. It'd be a properly maintained public street. Beyond that, the deliverance of water sewer service lines to lot 16 would be a requirement between preliminary and final plat. And then this subdivision will be in much more compliance with current town code than its current orientation. Right now, if someone came in with, asked subdivided a lot two building permit, the town staff would be trying to figure out how we issue a building permit and access to this lot with Par Avenue and that on the town street. At the planning and zoning commission meeting, I will say that in the staff report, town staff believes with some wordage changes and some easements allotted throughout this and some background that this would be a better, as proposed, would be a better alignment than what currently exists and certainly aligned with the rest of the town code minus this access issue. The access issue became a major speaking point at planning and zoning, with the two members of the commission believing that, you know, Par Avenue was the most logical addressing slash access to lot 16 in the future for ease of emergency services, et cetera. And then this might add confusion having access on lot 16 from Country Club Lane. And the discussion came, do we need to have approved Par Avenue to town standard, but we only have half the street? How does that exactly work? So the confusion really at planning and zoning came, I, where does access come from? And how can that be resolved by town? And how it shouldn't be resolved by town in terms of development process? And that's why I would say it faded two to two. I felt two commissioners felt that access should be off of Par Avenue and there should be something figured out behind how they can have legal access off of Par Avenue. And the other two felt that the law was probably in conformance, or better conformance to town code than it's currently aligned. So that's why it failed to have a recommendation and is coming to you guys as requested. We did follow up with the applicant and the agent. There was discussions of de-annexation and discussions of what can be done. I followed up with Mr. Wells about what they would like to do. They considered maybe de-annexation, but they, I believe that they felt that the proper way to proceed is to proceed with the current alignment. And we do believe, and I've spoken with Ed about this, that we can probably resolve some sort of access off of Par Avenue through discussions with the council. So I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, to answer any questions. This is one of the more confusing lot line adjustments we've ever done. I feel like we can get this all through.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Ed, any comments before I unleash them?
I got a serious problem with the way it's configured. I still feel the primary, in fact, that should be off of Country Club Lane because that is into town. That's a town access. The access of Par Avenue. Par Avenue is a strange entity in that it was an easement that was granted to the public by Redstone years ago. And it's just there. And it, even though half of it may have been annexed into the town, it's not dedicated as a town street. It's not maintained as a town street. I would support the configuration as it sits, as long as we work out the access from Country Club Lane. If they want to access off of Par Avenue, that's fine, but I think the addressing ought to be off of Country Club Lane.
So to be clear, hey, we've got the, the town limits kind of end up in the front yard of lot 15 there, right?
Oh, the town limit has east here. Lot, I think it's the lot 15 boundary. This extends further to the east, but that might be just, actually, this 10 inch, it's right here.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just got it up on the GIS.
This revr, I'm guessing it's this right here. This 10 inch water line goes down what's going to be the future slate lane, I would say.
Right.
That's the current lane to town.
Right. Yeah.
And currently there's water sewer service to, I'll call it lot one or the future lot 15. Those are all town utility services. Lot two is currently not serviced by a town utility service.
So then we would have to bring water service down to lot 16 and theory down Par Avenue, correct?
Yes, they're proposing it in their preliminary plat to come down Par Avenue for the water service line. And then the sewer service line, our sewer main actually continues south right there. They would, they have a proposed sewer service line in the southeast corner of lot 16 that would tie to the sewer mainhole right here.
Okay.
So sewer tie is much simpler than the water. It's along the water service line. It would take some care in the construction of it. Not a huge fan of water service lines of this length, but I don't see how you make it any shorter, especially, I mean, lot two right now. It'd be a longer service line than that. I don't know how.
And that would be at the applicant's calls, not the town.
Right, absolutely. So Ed, you're preferring that we make the access off of, off of Country Club Lane, which was what, two of the council, the planning and zoning, PNC members felt, and two of the PNC members felt it should be off of Par Avenue. Fair assessment.
I would say that's a package from my.
All right.
Review, and I would defer to this voice.
That's where, that's where I was going, that.
I, I try, it's hard to, in two hours of conversation, put it in a five minutes.
I thought you did a great job. To be fair, this is the third time I've heard it too. So anyhow. All right, councilman, why don't you go ahead and speak this, because you were on the.
Yeah, so the concern that we had is that, given that we are working on trying to fix a lot of addressing confusion, we don't want to add more to it. And the way this is split, it's almost guaranteed that the builder in the future would have their main entrance either be off of Par Avenue or Birdie, but not Country Club. It seems unlikely that it would be off of Country Club. And so for fire, ambulance, people like that, you know, it does not make sense to put the address on Country Club when they're, if they get to that point, they're going to have to turn around, go all the way back up and around, which is a significant diversion, UPS, those types of things. So it seemed like if their main entrance is going to be on Par Avenue, then we should allow them to have an address off Par. And I know there's, you know, problems there with it not being a town street, not being maintained. We only own the rights to half of it. You know, there, there were a lot of discussion about all of that, but our biggest concern was to, to not create further addressing confusion in the future for services to this property.
I agree. Those are very.
That was our primary.
All right.
Concerns.
Counsel, any questions on those who are seeing this for the more or less first time?
Mr. Mayor, can I have one more?
No, Claire.
My conversations with Mr. Wood after the planning and zoning meeting is that perhaps what we should require to allow this alignment to move forward, what should have been required at the time of the annexation is the dedication of a half a street of at least of, of Par Avenue. Because if that becomes a dedicated town street, there's nothing to go that says the town has that on it, dirt roads, paved roads, et cetera. Now, we have a construction standard when it comes to the time of subdivision, but these weird remnants, et cetera. We have other dirt roads in the Town of Pinedale. And I think at minimum, dedicating this last, this western 30 feet as a town street, though maybe reverbing some specific language in the plat regarding the responsibilities similar to Bloomfield is maybe a middle ground that gets this done and keeps the cost obligation off the town. But perhaps our common services that are required with annexation like snow plowing and water and sewer is served in that fashion. We do extend our, our plowing services down, and it would allow the subdivider to have a Par Avenue address at the.
My biggest concern, when you and I talked about it, Ed, just the council and then all that, whoever else wants to talk about it, I'm seeing future growth coming this direction. So Par Avenue actually made more sense to me because I see Agate and other streets coming in that direction and building into that future of growth is what makes more sense to me. I guess that kind of belongs to your fire and emergency responses, but that was my reasoning when I looked at it. It felt like that was to just tie everything together. And de-annexation, I, you know, I'd rather we just didn't do any of this. Yep.
And if you did that, you could preserve the future on, you could take an address off of Country Club and/or Par Avenue, depending what fit their needs, or someone might want to build an island down there, right? That's at the edge of town and comes off of Country Club Lane with long driveway. Another person might want to put it off of Par Avenue. They would have the freedom to do both, or both of those who are dedicated.
Right. Doesn't feel like there's a lot of space on lot two to have a driveway going in there, but I'm sure people can be clever. All right, councilmen, other councilmen who haven't spoke, thoughts?
I agree with you. I think we're going to, we're going to see a lot more growth in that area based on stuff we've already approved and stuff that's coming.
Get all that growth, right?
I think another access point, yeah. But keep it on, on Par.
Okay. Councilman Seva, Loftus?
Is the, the current ownership of Par Ave by the town just where the, the, the paving ends currently? Or do we, are we obligated to maintain further down?
So from my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, this is just a lot realignment. It's not created new lots. Like a subdivision, they would have to build the.
Right.
Bottom line, right? But our current operation is. That's all we've got to maintain to.
Right.
Perhaps when this annex took place in 1988, the discussion should have been, basic operations and snowball operations would continue down until Birdie Lane.
Yeah.
Intersection Birdie Lane, but we've never done it. Maybe out of bliss, but we just haven't done it.
I mean, equals us, it was annexed by ordinance, no plat. And that had of Par Avenue was not dedicated or accepted as, as a town street. Therefore, no improvements or maintenance found on anybody. It was a pretty messed up deal, I'll say that. But so, so it hasn't been maintained as a town street. It's not a town street at this point. Ed's point about having it dedicated, I think is a good point with some restrictions there. If the town is not obligated all of a sudden to bring into town standards at the town's cost to pay for it and start being excited about the town street there. So that was noted, it should be dedicated as a street with the conditions that the town does not have any improvements at this time.
Yep. That would be my lead.
Yeah, I agree.
Chads will become down the road. The person on the east side of the road decides they want to subdivide. And my, my meeting with them will be that you have to build this right to town standard. And they'll be like, well, why didn't that guy have to build this down standard? And.
Yeah.
How I can do this point at the ordinance of 1988.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know.
That's all they can do.
For any of us, yeah. And for snow plowing, that extra couple hundred feet, none.
I mean, our, from, this would be the easiest piece of street to plant in Old Town. There's borrow ditch. We don't have any borrow ditches.
It's going to be like, hey, I know, let's put our audits around town. Cool. All right, so we are being asked to accept or deny or approve and deny this subdivision. So I guess we would be approving this subdivision and specifying that the legal entrance would be off of Par Avenue, correct? And also.
That's an approval.
Designating one half of that street this. Align with what you're asking of us.
I think you guys need to.
Is that it? Is that? Yeah, so that's that. Yeah.
There are some things in the staff report that we have laid out. It's approved, the staff have recommended it goes in. However.
Yes, so just, it's this lot right here is that parcel.
It would be a, in fact, I would.
Yeah, and then what they want.
We just got the outline, so it's a slot down. I think the access off of Country.
Somehow.
Makes sense now.
Trying to get a long plot of.
Renovation of street, improvements to.
Yeah, maybe in 1988.
Oh, is that true?
What?
Actually, you have to read those minutes. Was Delgado the? Okay, nevermind. Is he elected or unelected?
Unelected, elected. And then shortly thereafter, there were changes to the plat.
Interesting.
Changes and stuff. Lot of changes.
That's fun.
And we are where we are today. Hey, yeah, every town has this. That's what makes us who we are. So I think fixing that is a great idea. De-annex, de-annexation, I don't think is on the table. I see future growth in this area. We have Mr. Goodrich doing a massive development just west, east of there. I think trying to tie all that in together makes sense from my perspective. I keep it. So.
Mr. Goodrich is on that and raises hands with a discussion question.
Yeah, go ahead, Chauncey.
Sorry, guys, I'm not used to the online thing. I just had a quick question on, in, in listening. So who, who has to pave that road? We just had.
Future development.
Us.
Future development.
What, so is this not the development? This is just the, this total five acres is just staying two different lots?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the way that the 1988 plat reads is that.
Not if I.
Who would the ordinance raise is it not on us, so.
And they specifically waived it off of the annex.
Oh, right, yeah.
Like specifically called out that no improvements necessary were required by the town. And then waived to the town of any future development. So, so.
But this developer doesn't have to do that, doesn't have to put the road in.
No. And from staff's perspective, Chauncey, is if they were subdividing this from two lots to more than two lots. It would be a formal subdivision and not a lot realignment. We'd specifically, at that point in time, like this is a subdivision. It has to be brought to town standard. That would no longer, in my opinion, follow the.
That's right.
Two, the ordinance 211's requirements of no improvement because it would now be a further subdivision.
Okay, that was my question. Yep. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Thanks, 1988. All right.
I would say, Mr. Mayor, I don't know, I know. Mr. Wells and I have had some comments and back and forth, we talked about maybe making it, et cetera. Mr. Wells, is this still a plat that you guys wish?
I had to give you the word.
Yeah, I did speak with Harvard and he would like to add an access easement off of Par Avenue and off of Country Club Lane. So kind of meet the goals of what we're talking about here. So thirty foot wide, dedicated to the town strip along Par Avenue, which would formally dedicate it to the town and just the public. And then also off of Country Club Lane, a thirty foot by forty foot wide rectangle easement, kind of extending Lot Sixty's access on the Country Club Lane. It's important to note also that Country Club Lane, I was not able to find the full width easement on Country Club Lane where this subdivision meets up to Country Club Lane. And you can see I drew it in, it's just a thirty foot wide strip on Country Club Lane. The text is down the right hand side of this. If you pull up your GIS, you can see that most of the road is improved outside of that limit. The one acre lot, which is also owned by this applicant, is not part of that subdivision and does not have any easement across it for Country Club Lane or Par Avenue. So not that it's not there, but I was not able to find it.
He's discussing this lot right here.
Yeah. Of Delgado.
So this parcel. This section here and this section here. So as I have it drawn, Lot Sixteen does about to the full width of Country Club Lane as it is physically drawn, this portion.
And there's no easement.
There is here, but this thirty feet, you have this line.
Yeah.
This is just the remnant of all these subdivisions. There should be a line there and there should be a line.
Yeah, just a map, even.
Dedicated to the town. It's just like this remnant parcel, it's never been subdivided.
But to the effect of access on Country Club Lane, it did agree that we could add a thirty foot wide, forty foot long addition across Lot Fifteen here. Something like that, or I don't know what shape it would be, but yeah. And then the dedicated to the town right away is this thirty foot wide strip.
I should remind, there also would be a dedication to the west of that thirty feet, on the west side of that.
No, that would just be the private easement, so not a.
No, no, I'm not talking about the detriment, I'm talking about the extension of Country Club Lane. Where you said the.
Oh, this portion here, yes.
Not this time, but the applicant would like to be further division of that one acre. And at that time, definitely. So it's just, that one acre is not part of this subdivision application. And so I don't think it was proper to add that into this plat.
Future planning?
It could be done with this other document.
Be nice to put the Country Club. It'd be nice to put both sides to bed because there is a paved town street right through. I don't know what's there.
Yeah, and so if you turn on the area.
Yeah.
That's such an awkward.
So you can see the majority of the pavement is built outside the right of way because Country Club Lane has these storm sewer infiltrators here that are actually in the right of way.
Yeah, this big green strip between the sidewalk and the curb is a giant underground infiltration gallery. It's the biggest one in the town of Pine Dale. And it carries all kinds of water down there. It's impressive infrastructure.
So just add more confusion for this area.
One with the side of town.
Who was the attorney at this time?
By the way, I clarified that it was not me.
I know it was, I know it wasn't, I was making sure. I was actually defending you, indirectly.
We should really clean it all up with.
I do, I think.
That end of town getting.
I think we should clean the whole thing up, so, okay. I think we're all on the same page. What's the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would refer to the last page of my staff report versus conditions, including one more addition that requires the dedication of that thirty feet part of. And then those improvements can be done between now and final plat to come back to you guys. Are you comfortable with that yet?
Yes, that would be, that's just conditions that have to be done before the final plat is.
The six conditions, et cetera.
All right. You need to go through the improvements too?
I am not included in the plat, so just move the line over. See, if I ever become mayor, you can just de-annex your house and be a cool item.
That's the case.
I'm thinking about a cul-de-sac, so I don't even know if I'm in the town anyway, but. It's where the street is. So you need all six of these and do we need to make note of the improvements too?
Let me.
Looking at your report.
Let me go into my report here. So as a reminder, the six conditions, the first is, the first one I should say is they shall address the review comments provided by the town surveyor. Number two is a note to the plat should be added that this property was annexed by ordinance to a left of the town of Pine Dale and insert the date of final read. That's just because there's no record at the county clerk offices with people's first plat indicated, but date of 2025, not 1988. Advocate shall provide a legal access easement from Country Club Lane. Advocate shall resolve the remnant right of way. I don't know if that one was required from our discussions here, that remnant hits to the north. So I think you could exclude number four. A note of the plat. That number five could be modified with your guys' Par Avenue discussion, dedication of Par. That would resolve it. And it'd be good to go with number six is still out, so. My favorite, you can always say until Ed's happy.
Waiting for those words to be in the minutes.
Until Ed's happy.
Okay, so fifty-four. So we'll have to revisit this though, right, Mr. Mayor? At the time when that other acre comes up, get that clarified?
Yeah, I mean, just that one northern acre, I'm sort of looking at two, since it's on the east-west side of that acre, yeah. That would be a separate application, specific to that lot. And that wouldn't just another life, lots of alignment there.
And the process from here to prove would be that they can either build the water sewer and monuments, the stuff included in the staff report for improvements, if they were by a plat, or they could bomb those improvements coming in the final plat. I think we have to have, I think, fifteen day able advertising period before it goes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna try it.
I move that we approve the subdivision application for Swingers Greens Fourth filing to include the vacation of Lot One, Swingers Greens Addition, still weird to say with two plurals, and the vacation of Lot Two, Swingers Greens Addition, and the creation of Lot Fifteen and Sixteen pending the following conditions. Can I just name them or just list them?
Yeah, you can say one, two, four in the staff report.
Yeah, one, two, and three from the staff report. You said to exclude four. And then five and six.
Well, five would be modified to include the dedication of thirty feet of right of way of the Par Avenue to the town of Pine Dale and inclusion of condition six.
Got that, Amy?
Okay, so one through three excluding four, adding the thirty foot of Par Avenue into five, correct? And six is still good to be included as well. Okay, that's a dirty motion, but.
I'll second.
It doesn't feel, yeah, it's just, yeah.
All right, it's moved by Councilman Swafford, second of the council on the voice to approve the subdivision application for Swingers Greens Fourth filing to include the vacation of Lot One, Swingers Green Addition, and the vacation of Lot Two, Swinger Greens Addition, and the creation of Lots Fifteen and Sixteen with the conditions that were cited in the report. All those in favor? Yep.
That should include the provision that this preliminary plat.
That is a preliminary plat.
The plat will be cleaned.
All right, we moved and seconded. Any further discussion, any further comments, any further cleaning here? None, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. For the host, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Mr. Wells, your hard work on this. That's Ape. This is good, I'm actually happy to get this cleaned up. This is, you know, it's one of those things you look on the map.
Those lines are so good though.
It's weird.
One of these days, I always ask, and how do people always come up with new things to confuse us? You're like, nothing is straightforward and easy like it should be.
Is that a lack, I mean, honest question, is that a lack of consistency in the code over the years? No?
No, that was just a.
Lack of consistency in leadership? Okay, okay.
All right. All right, next item on the agenda is other town business. This is NC Construction deed restriction. As it turns out, we had an amendment that was in the deed restriction that somehow didn't get carried into the final one that we approved. This is in letter item one C of the deed. As I'm remembering correctly, a qualified household means one qualified resident or group of persons that contains at least one qualified residence. In the case of a family household, only one member must be a qualified resident. However, in the case of an unrelated individual sharing a unit, each document must individually qualify as a qualified resident. And for some reason, the second half of that paragraph was not included in the copy that we approved here. So this is just to make clear that you can't also have one person who is a qualified resident and one person who's still derelict living in the affordable housing deed restricted area. If that makes sense. If that makes sense. Chauncey or Mr. Goodrich, do you want to say anything to this? I think this is pretty straightforward, but give me an opportunity.
You're on mute if you're trying, I guess.
I just found the mute. No, I don't have anything to add, thanks, Natalie.
Okay. Two seconds. Add it. Do you get it?
Yes, it was dropped. At the final approval, the change was dropped.
To be fair, this is like a forty or fifty email chain that was going back and forth between several of us and so. Abe, all good? All right.
I think we got the right document this time, and I'm not sure what the right document is.
This is it. I have verified it, Abe has verified it, Mr. Goodrich has verified it, Amy has verified it. This is it. So if I could have a motion, you're approved. Yeah? Okay. I move that we approve the amended housing deed restriction for Lot Three, Block One of the Par Avenue, second addition to the town of Pine Dale, Sublet County, State of Wyoming.
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilman Loftus to approve the amended housing deed restriction for Lot Three, Block One of Par Avenue, second addition to the town of Pine Dale, Sublet County, State of Wyoming. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. For the host, motion carries. Isn't this exciting? This is like the third time we've approved a deed restriction. If only that could mean like six minutes instead of two. Anyhow, onwards and upwards. That is all for other town business. Now we move into the ordinances. Ordinance seven thirty-three, this is its first read, amending the definition of building height, chapter four seventy-five, article two, section four seventy-five dash eleven. Abe, I know this has been, this rose out of our ball field discussion, but I'll let you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this did arise out of a discussion with Sublet County School District Number One regarding confusion on the code of what max building height is. It's defined of an average of a gable and the absolute peak of a flat and some average in between of roofs that don't, and then several roof definitions that don't even exist in it. So there was confusion on how to calculate that max building height. We brought this to town council, you guys gave us permission to take it to planning and zoning. We looked at a couple different options, but town, planning and zoning, this is their recommended building height definition, which simplifies the definition to the absolute max building height excluding certain things, vets, chimneys, and other mechanical components of the operation of the building. Those should be exempt from the building height, but everything else would be considered absolute max building height, which would get away from any type of averages or classification, especially where several buildings these days have multiple types of roofs on the same building. So the recommendation is before you, this recommendation passed five oh at the point. Mr. Wells rejoined the bench at this point.
That was awesome. So it is from the highest point of the building. Is that correct?
To the finished lot grade directly below that.
Finished lot grade directly below that.
We discussed that several times, if should we do centerline road, what we should do. We do live in a pretty flat area.
But if I were to come in and just say, I really would love to have just a little bit better view. And I just kind of added an extra three foot of fill on my lot and built it, then that would be the new lot line and I would get three feet, even if I was three feet above the street, I could get the.
So we discussed if it should be from centerline road. The discussion came up of if it became like Orchid Hill and Orchid Hill was ever annexed into the lot, then the road that services those lots on the south side of Orchid Hill would be, I think it's currently called Lake Road, or something like that, where you would have a road far below the actual foundation level of your building. Or if you were, I can't call them what I want to call them here, but Skyline Drive, the house is south of Skyline Drive, so the hillside that comes down, if you were to build off of that hillside, now you could build a fifty foot tall building because your road that accesses it is Skyline Drive up above lots. So that was a tough definition. I felt that this would be generally speaking with as flat as Pine Dale is and how it would work that this would kind of thread the needle and not get too unrealistic. But there is a chance this.
It's gonna be interesting because like twenty years from now or thirty years from now, someone's gonna do something. They're gonna come back to twenty twenty-five, ordinance seven thirty-three, and just say, who was the mayor and the attorney at that time?
The tweet ordinance is to address issues that we found that problems we ordered. We found a problem this one is because it's just, excuse me, so damn confusing. Hard to read. It's a simple, can it be abused possibly? It is somebody in the future that has addressed.
I mean, it's better this way, I think, than fighting over the definition of a gable versus.
I agree.
Yeah, what's that, you refit? You know, that's, the shed roof wasn't listed.
What are we doing?
So it's thirty-five feet to the peak of the roof, the highest point.
Yep.
I could put a second story on my head.
First, you have houses to be near, this will actually lower residential houses in Pine Dale.
I know, that's what I'm saying, it will.
You probably forty and thirty with an average of thirty-five on a current gable. And so you could have a forty foot tall house now, this would have a house of thirty feet.
That's right. So that's what I'm standing with.
It's actually lower the building height inside a residential, industrial, I could leave the building height to forty-five.
Probably a couple.
From memory, but.
And that thirty-five feet was understood by planning and zoning whenever they recommended?
Yeah. And we had a lot of discussion about, you know, whether we be more specific about different types of roofs, but you could never, I mean, something may be invented tomorrow that would be a different type of roof and it's not covered. And that's what we ran into the problem with the CTE building is it has a shed roof, which is not in our code. And so we needed a simplified way to say, how high can this building be? Not that building, because that one's done, but in the future.
We also discussed, I don't know, proper turn rates.
Steeles and add-ons and things, we discussed that, but. Steeple's and, and add-ons and things, we discussed that, but it's inside of this was easier.
Based on what Cody has went through in the last twelve months.
Yeah, right. But that's a commercial building, so that wouldn't, what Cody's dealing with.
So in Cody, what happened is they didn't consider the steeple of the proposed, um, building as a title as part of this building. They got into fighting magic, what's part of the building and what's not part of the building. To me, by this definition, that's part of the building. And certainly if someone wanted to build a taller steeple, that they could certainly come before this governing body at that many times and justify why that's a need to kick us and set out their neighborhood notifications, et cetera, of why their steeple needed to be taller than thirty-five.
The input was variance.
We felt like that was cleaner though than to try to define it and then, you know.
It's almost the stairway to heaven.
Well, it goes all the way, doesn't it?
No, 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 no. You guys, isn't the stairway to heaven?
The question is how far away is heaven?
No, no, and I, I mean, like, right behind.
Somebody wants families to sell.
What do you guys call it at the town? It's not stairway to heaven, is it?
I'm not, I'm just gonna say this.
Stairway to nowhere, whatever. How tall is that?
I believe it's below thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Well, about be over there in southeast Pineville.
Yeah.
So it's important to keep in mind that it's the building height definition right here, and so kind of with helping it has the wanting to have it be defined against the, the creating the road, I think that can be controlled in the future by, um, creating and room control and permitting for residential design. Where you have, you can have you can have retaining walls approved, the steeper grades need to be approved, those kind of things. Where maybe in twenty years, if somebody is going to build a giant retaining wall to lift their house up, then it could be addressed that way. Through the building height definition, right?
But if we pass this, do we need to then go back and change that from thirty-five to forty? So that we're not actually.
Yeah, how tall, how tall is typically a two-story building?
Uh, two-story building would be about eighteen to twenty feet at the roof interface plus the truss.
Does that mean the truss is?
There's another fifteen.
Yeah, so depending on the size, I think it'd be very hard to be over thirty-five feet with a two-story building. I think at a three-story building, you're gonna have to work at it to keep it under thirty-five. It's doable, so I can tell you that the building, the six plexes over here, which are three stories, are proposed to be thirty-five. Almost on my head, so.
Okay. Sorry, I, it, full disclosure, I was actually thinking of scraping my house and building a new place. And I was counting on that thirty-foot right there in the middle, and now I'm like, if I'm old school, thirty. Go back, it's nineteen eighty-eight there. Sorry, we're gonna hold off on this thing until I get my new house built.
And there always can be discussion, but then our one, our two, our three, is thirty-five feet the appropriate building height or is not? Now we change the definition, but I've actually never seen one come, the SR, I'm sorry, the school building is the first one I've seen over thirty-five, so.
So it's really not pushed up against that?
No, I think there's other buildings in town, and it's important to note that everybody here, this town exceeds this.
They're correct.
Be grandfounding.
Yeah, they're grandfounding, I get that.
Or a few, future building permit, they come in to do an addition, and that addition just can't comply further, so that the addition would have to be in that for thirty-five.
I was just thinking for anyone that's considering doing building in their homes already and then the works, if we go ahead and change this out from under them in the next six months.
Yeah, if somebody has a building permit, this should be grandfounding, but if somebody's like sitting there and they got the plan.
But they're getting ready to apply for.
And then we change it, in the next six weeks, they're gonna be hit when they come in for a building permit, they're gonna be, we're gonna be saying, sorry.
Yeah, but we can always do a variance if there's something like that that's legitimately.
I guess that would come, you would know.
Because that's not self-imposed, that's imposed by us.
Yeah, we're trying. That's fair.
You can still address. Yeah.
Well, what we were saying is, is you wouldn't have been.
Changing rules and somebody said, I've got five thousand dollars in architectural fees, that's not self-imposed.
Right.
Yeah. I guess what we were talking about is they're on their way to fill out the building permit, so you don't know yet. It, I think that was the kind of the case.
I just didn't know how much that five feet's really gonna come into play.
I don't, I don't think it will, from everything that we, we looked at several buildings and, and it just doesn't seem like it's gonna be a problem. The, the commercial buildings are really the only ones that seem to get that high in the game.
Like you could tell in nineteen eighty-eight, you don't know what you don't know, so.
That's true.
You don't know if it's gonna be a problem yet.
It's true.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance seven thirty-three on first read, an ordinance of the town of Pineville, State of Wyoming, amending the definition of building height in chapter four seventy-five, article two, section, chapter four seventy-five dash eleven.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Vasiba, second by Councilwoman Voice, to approve ordinance seven thirty-three on its first read. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor please say aye. Aye, for the host. Motion carries five zero. Next item is ordinance seven thirty-four, also on its first read. This is an ordinance of the town of Pineville, State of Wyoming, amending chapter first, four seventy-five, article twenty-nine, section four seventy-five dash two forty-four M, titled multi-family development requirements. Abe, get off.
Yep. Mr. Mayor and Council, this was also discussed, brought to you guys and referred to planning and zoning for consumption at a public hearing, this was considered at the last meeting, condominiums, late September, I guess, twenty twenty-nine. The, uh, code as it's written doesn't make sense, it says that, um, multi-family, that all utilities have to be separated per the International Building Code, although the International Building Code does not state that, in fact, multi-family dwellings are very common to have shared utilities for major apartment complexes. Rocky Mountain Power always encourages power to be separated, but does not require it. It's more required from our code from individual ownership standpoint. And so I think the code currently conflicts itself, I think this cleans it up nicely, and I think this, um, is in unison with how we apply the standard in the town of Pineville. So what, a six-plex, a four-plex coming into the town, if that's gonna be a seemingly owned unit and rented, it could have shared water, it could have shared sewer, it could have shared, shared electric heat, all the things that make apartments more efficient and to, to be done that way. Uh, however, if someone wants to sell a four-plex, that that would have to be individually water, sewer, electric, heat, et cetera, there's no shared utilities, or it has to follow condominium requirements, which establishes a condominium association, which I am greatly opposed to at this point in time. Just from the recent, uh, we're reading through these things, but we only have one of those in town here today, and, uh, but it could certainly be done again.
All right, any questions, comments? This is pretty straightforward.
There is a mistake in it, and I'm trying to fix it real quick, give me just a second. Trying to find the article. Uh, the title, I think, is correct, but I think the body, I think it has article twenty-one instead of article twenty-nine. Correct, there's an X missing in the body. Oh, you did fix it.
Okay.
The one in the agenda says article twenty-one.
Oh, wait, no, that is.
It should be article twenty-nine. The title is correct, the body is wrong.
Yep.
Yeah, it's supposed to be the last six. Oh, there, mine is correct, scratch that. It's correct, article twenty-one is up.
Our motion.
I move that we approve ordinance seven thirty-four on first read, an ordinance of the town of Pineville, State of Wyoming, amending chapter four seventy-five, article twenty-nine, section, chapter four seventy-five dash two forty-four M, titled multi-family development requirements.
Second. All right, uh, moved by Councilwoman Voice, second by Councilwoman Vasiba, to pass ordinance seven thirty-four on first read. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item, last item, is presentation of the bills.
So I'll, I'll make this motion, but I want to discuss it before we vote on it. Um, I move that we approve the bills for September eighth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of six hundred eighty thousand, five hundred dollars and twenty-two cents, paid with checks three one eight three four through three one eight seven nine.
So, moved by Councilwoman Voice, second by Councilman Swafford. Discussion.
Yes, a question, um, after we pay this bill related to the, um, shallow water main, how much more will we still owe that contractor?
Contractually required five percent retainage is still withheld, and some final punch those items that they have to clean up, get done.
Okay, that was my question, because I know we had talked about there's, there are some things that still need to be done over there, and half a million dollars is a pretty good incentive, so I'm wondering if, do we need to hold that until those are done, or you're?
Contractually required, contractually we should pay this bill, we hold a five percent retainage on the contract that is the incentive that we're legally allowed to hold until the.
Okay, and do we have a?
Which is a right around a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Do we have a timeline on when that's?
Paul and his team are supposed to be here tomorrow, is the text message I got this afternoon, we had a great discussion on this.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we weren't handing over all of our bargaining chips.
You still have a five percent retainage on the time.
Right.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Any final motions?
I move the way adjourned.
Second. Moved by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilwoman Loftus, to adjourn at six P M. Get my clock set, we're supposed to be starting the discussion. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero, thank you, everybody.
Your team. Like nineteen eighty-eight.